December 22nd. I know, right? Hey, it's all good. I give her the passcode so she can... It is nine.
It's nine. We'll call this regular meeting of Marion County Board of Supervisors to order. Roll call. Mr. Grandy.
Keisha Johnner.
Here.
Mark Ramey.
Here.
Steve McCombs.
Here.
Very good. I would entertain a motion on this morning's agenda. I know we have an adjustment. Keisha.
Yes, I make motion to amend this morning's agenda. Removal of number seventeen, the closed session.
There's a motion from Johnner to strike item seventeen from the agenda. Is there support?
Second.
There's support. Would entertain a motion to strike, or we'll call on striking item seventeen. Sorry.
McCombs?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
Very good. Would now entertain a motion on the approval of the agenda as amended.
So moved?
Second.
McCombs?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
Very good. Thank you. Communications, Jake, any communications received?
No, sir.
Very good. Public comments, this is the portion of our agenda the public can speak on items not contained on this morning's agenda, since most of it is Missy and she is here, and she'll take care of that piece. Public can speak on any item not on this morning's agenda. The Board of Supervisors cannot act on those items, but they could be topics for future meetings. Are there any public comments, items not on this morning's agenda? Going to our technology here as well. Seeing none, we will move on. Is there a motion on this morning's consent agenda?
Make motion, we approve today's consent agenda.
Second.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Very good. First item is a discussion on the VA campus demolition project. Note the word that's included there. Demolition project. So we have several things we need to discuss this morning regarding that. And I'll try to itemize them. If I forget anything, please jump in. The first is, we need to discuss and potentially authorize Chris Nestaby, our facilities director, to begin to solicit bids from qualified contractors for the demolition project. This will be something that will take some time to do, and Chris needs to be able to have the authorization from the board to solicit those bids. Those will again become a public bidding process because of the size and scope of what we are undertaking. But we want to get that moving and give Chris that authorization. Second item is for bonding. We need to have a discussion on how we would like to approach the financing of the demolition project. And what I mean by that is, what is the size of the bonding we would like to do initially? And then how would we like that financing to be structured? So I'll give you a for instance for your consideration. If we look at the VA campus as it stands, if we look at interest rates, what we did for Prairie Ridge, we're looking at probably a fairly large project. Now, we don't have to decide specifically on this today, but it is for our discussion. I want to keep that in focus. Do we want to go with five million initially? Do we want to go with ten million in two tranches? One in the spring, one in the summer, as we see how the project develops and unfolds? What would be the best structure for that? So that's item two. And then the last item is really a discussion of the 2080 process that I have initiated with our outside counsel to start the process working with Knoxville. So let's take these in order. The first is authorizing Chris Nestaby, facilities director for Marion County, to begin to solicit bids for the demolition of the VA. Is there any discussion?
I ask, Chris, do you feel that there will be opportunity, I mean, you, right now, do you feel that there is some people that are willing to demo? You know, have you had any, with people reaching out at all? In the aspect of, prior to this, I know that we'd had some phone calls, I had received some phone calls, you know, and we've all directed them to you. Do you still feel that there's opportunity there for demo?
I do. We've had long-running conversations with multiple, large-scale demo contractors that are always, you know, wanting to find out where the county is in their decision-making process, timeframes, things of that nature. Obviously, nothing's set in stone, but I would say, just like the courthouse, this is prime time to bid any project.
Okay.
Whenever you think about, whether it be specialty contracting, or you think about just a general contractor doing things like elevators, winter is the prime time to start to line someone up to get bids for the simple fact, most people bid projects in the Midwest to end in the wintertime, and then move into it, into a work.
Okay.
So they're not going to have a whole lot of exterior work lined up for the winter. This is the time that they're going to be hungry, and this is the time where we're probably going to get the most beneficial bids for the taxpayers. So I think now is the time if we're going to do it. Now's the time to do it. We don't want to wait till spring breaks.
Okay. I appreciate that perspective. That's what I was, yeah, asking.
There are really two components to this, to break down this bidding process. Number one, we need an estimate of what it's going to cost to demolish the VA. In order to deal with item number two, specifically, what will the financing look like? So even though I brought it up, and I want you to begin thinking about that structure and the amounts, it's not something we have to determine today. I've talked with Michael Maloney, our finance resident expert, and we've worked out that, once we get the bidding process started, and once we get someone in that can do an estimate for us, that's when we can start to formalize the financing piece. But I think it is worth discussing how we would like to do that, at least start that discussion, and start that thought process. So that's on the table to begin to formulate. And Jake, you certainly can add to this discussion as well. We've gone through this with Prairie Ridge. It also leads into the third element, which is the 2080 that is being drafted for consideration of this board and the City Council of Knoxville. We have said all along that there needed to be an agreement between our two entities, and I have enlisted Nathan from Allers and Cooney to, I think it's Overburg is his last name, Jake, might remember that right, to reach out to Knoxville and start that process. And there's really a critical component to that piece. We are going to add in the 2080 a county TIF. So I want to make sure everybody understands that. A county TIF authorization, and we'll have to go through a negotiating process similar to what we did with Pella. In other words, we'll have to talk with the school district, we'll talk with the city, we'll talk with, and of course, the Board of Supervisors. But those taxing entities will all have to agree to the structure. What does a county TIF do? High level? We will structure an agreement whereby, at the outset of development, as houses come online and taxes are received from that property, the county will receive most of that money initially to pay us back, and begin to pay us back, and the taxpayers back for that investment. And then we can have a scaled structure where eventually it comes into equilibrium. I've thrown out initial proposals of seventy-five, twenty-five split between Marion County and the City of Knoxville. And then over time, as we collect dollars and we begin to recover and recoup our taxpayers' investment, that would begin to come into a more balanced perspective. And then eventually, the schools will come into that agreement. So you'll see, it'll be an agreement that has different grades to it as it matures. But I think initially for the county, and I think, I've talked with Knoxville preliminarily on this, with Aaron and Brian, and the new incoming, probably, at least interim city manager Heather, to say, I think that's fair. I think that type of structure is fair. Second piece that it does, it protects our interests in the event of a leadership change. As we're seeing, Aaron is leaving. We wish him well. He's headed to Colorado. Heather, I'm sure will do a great job, but she is the interim did... Do you know, did that happen?
Yes.
I didn't check the City Council numbers. But she'll do a great job for the city. But in the event of other leadership changes that will protect our interests, where we don't have just a handshake agreement with the city, we've got something codified in an agreement. So that's the purpose. There are more purposes to the 2080 besides that, but that's one of the key financial purposes to that structure.
I think to be responsible, we need to do that for the taxpayers.
Yeah.
Censor footing bill.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not only the residents of Knoxville, but the
So we think about...
County is old.
So Steve, when you, when you, when you think about this, again, we're not asking for a decision on that structure today. Once we get a draft, we'll bring that to the board, we'll talk about the structure. But be thinking about that monetary split. And like I've said, I've talked with Michael, I've talked with Nathan. That seventy-five, twenty-five split sounds like a good starting point for us. And allows us, as development comes online, and it can run for five years, seven years, whatever, and then change to maybe a sixty, forty split. Graduate down, and then you bring the school district in after about a period of seven to ten years. Because initially for the schools, here's the school financial issue. It is more beneficial to them early on to have rooftops. Because the more rooftops you get with younger families, the more students you get. Well, they get more money from the state per student than they do from taxes. So that initial infusion of cash for the school district is students. New students moving to Knoxville and attending Knoxville School District. But over time, as that stabilizes, you want to, you want to receive some tax revenue. So think about that balance. Anyway, I wanted to get that, so you were thinking about it, so we talk, begin to talk about that. That'll be within the context of that agreement. So when we think about contracting and the demolition project itself, it's two parts. We need that estimate, and then we've got to have someone who can handle it. Those are really, if I think about it, Chris, and I'm not the expert in demolition here, those are the two broad parameters that I need from a financial perspective to structure the rest of this appropriately.
Okay.
I think, I think when we look at it, we need to look, we need to look at our cost estimates, the demolition as a whole. I mean, total demolition. I know we talked about phasing and everything else, but I think we need to get estimates for a total demolition. That's going to give us some more accurate numbers in the, in the end. Whether it's done in phases or not, we still need that number of total demolition.
Steve, I think that is an excellent point. That we've talked, since we acquired the VA, should we do this in phases? Are we going to do the one side of the road first, or whatever? But I think you're, you're spot on, that this estimate has to be for the entirety of the project. And it can certainly have components to it where it's set, where we get the estimate, this is what the above ground will cost, this is what the below ground will cost. If you add these things into it, and Chris knows how to structure that bid appropriately, but it has to be for the whole campus.
Right. Because I'm sure it's going to be done in phases. I mean, I, I
Yeah.
I can't see it done in any other way. I could be wrong, but
Yeah.
I'm certain, you know, that redevelopment is going to be in phases. But we need to look at the total demolition cost.
The, the other thing to think about too is timeframe. I'm sure that'll be a component of the bidding process, Chris. And my expectation right now is that this is probably all of 2021. That if we get started as soon as the ground's ready to be, whatever that has to be, I think this takes all of a year to get this done appropriately, and we want to do it well.
Yeah, I agree. I don't see anything being less than that.
So, so there's no expectation on our part, at least my part, that someone comes in and says, well, that I can do it in six months and shave off X. I think, unless you tell me otherwise, I'm going to be suspect of that, probably right out of the gate.
That's what I
Okay, all right.
Okay.
The other component of that is disposal. So just to let the board know, I've had a discussion with the City of Knoxville to begin to think about road routes. In other words, there will be a lot of heavy vehicles. So when you think about what we did with the hydroelectric dam, where we had a specified route for trucks to haul in and out, I already talked with Brian and with Heather and Aaron about, about Knoxville, thinking about where they would like trucks to go. Because it can't just be a free-for-all. Everybody comes out of the VA and goes every which way. There needs to be a specified route. They are working on that piece. That will also be part of the 2080. That has to go into the 2080 as well. So that'll be part of any bid, and they, I'm saying this, Chris, so when you have that conversation, once we authorize you to let them know, that's going to be a component of this. I'm sure they know that, but it doesn't hurt to reiterate that for folks. And I'm sure there will be some other, I don't know what to call them, but neighborly issues we will have to deal with on a project of this magnitude.
Peripheral damage.
Yeah. Yeah. So, anyway, any, any other, I don't want to take all the discussion. It's a big deal. We're going to get moving on it. We made a commitment to get moving on this by spring, and we will. And I'm excited. I think this is a great move for Marion County, for our taxpayers, and for our future. Oh, last piece. I have met with, I had a meeting at State Capitol, where I, where I, and Kelly, our lobbyists, do a wonderful job arranging these meetings. This is why it pays to have our own contact up there. So my compliments to her and to, to her staff. But had a great meeting. John Thorpe was involved in this meeting. So I was glad to have Representative Thorpe there as well. But having conversations about RIF funding. And would our project qualify for that fund? And there's significant money. It has to be re-appropriated every year by the state legislature, but we are, I have asked that we would be considered for that funding. So that, depending on how that goes, a great conversation. I'm sure there will be more, but I wanted to make sure everybody knew about that as well. Okay?
Thank you for doing that, Mark. I mean, I totally agree. I'm glad we have some representation up there that we have our foot in the door. Otherwise, we were just being forgotten.
Yeah, yeah. That's absolutely right, Steve. So for authorizing, Chris, to do this, do you have any other discussion questions, concerns, before we, I ask for a motion, then his ability to go forward and start soliciting those bids?
No.
Nope.
Okay. With that, Chris, any comment from you before?
Ready to go.
Big project, from the frying pan to the fire.
That's the way I like it.
I know you can handle it. With that, I would entertain a motion to authorize our facilities director, Chris Nestaby, to solicit bids for the demolition of the VA.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion and support, Jake.
McCombs?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye.
Chris, thank you.
Thanks for handling this, Chris.
Thank you for going from one project to another. We appreciate you.
I hate to be bored, so.
So probably the next thing is, as you go through this process, Chris, give us a read on how long you think it will take. And as we plan our meetings, to make sure, if we have to have special meetings to consider bids or questions, we will do that. I have a feeling this is going to ratchet up in the spring in terms of the numbers and things we've got to address. So we just want to be prepared for that. Perfect. Thank you. Taking care of that. Second thing, on the funding, there really is no action necessary on this, folks. Just begin thinking about that. And obviously, this will be contingent on this bidding process. But I want you to be thinking about the structure. Again, my, my druthers, and this is not to give you any... You can certainly have your own opinion on this. I, I look at this as almost in a two-tranche deal, where initially, we will authorize ten million dollars of debt, but we will tell Jake to issue five million. We will, once we get the bids, once we know what this is, and then we will issue another five million as the project develops. Unless the bid comes back well beyond ten million dollars, that changes the math.
Right. We really need to get those bids so we kind of know.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's, but, but think of that, regardless of that bid, think of that kind of a split.
Yeah, the process.
Yeah. So let's say it's a twelve million dollar bid, maybe it's six and six. I, I don't know. We, we can have, and we'll have Michael on the phone to talk about interest rate favorability, sensitivity analysis, all of that type of thing. And then the third thing is, we will have drafts, the 2080. Don't know when that will happen, holidays, but it's going to be in January-ish. We begin to have that discussion. Okay? All right. And with that authorization and really no other action items, I would entertain a motion to close discussion on item one.
Make motion to close discussion.
Second.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye. Very good. Item two is a, or I will declare the public hearing open. I can take my glasses off to see that. And that we have a proposed Marion County ordinance 2020-68, off-road utility vehicles. Is that you, Missy?
No, that's Jason. And Jason does courthouse and leads county attorneys.
Are they on?
Yes.
I got my glasses back on. All right. Sheriff, do we have you on?
Can you hear me, Mark? I got Ed, Karen, and I are all, that's all part of us here. I also believe there's somebody trying to call in to talk about it on the public hearing side of it. The Sean C., I think he was in support of this.
Yeah, we've got, we've got, they're trying to connect right now, but they're not connecting, so...
There's a couple of phone numbers. I think he might be one of them.
So, but yeah, this is just the, the public hearing aspect of the ordinance in regards to the UTV operation that we've already talked about and discussed.
And you are supportive of this, Sheriff?
I am.
Okay. Ed, any issues from your standpoint?
No, we've worked through the issues with Karen's office and Ross from my office and the sheriff. It's good to go. There's your issue with the camera. I would indicate that three thirty-one, three oh-two, six A and B are going to allow you to not have to do a second, second reading, since we're already published. As long as the majority of you chooses, just go ahead and vote today, this can become an ordinance immediately.
Got it. Thank you. Thank you, Councilor. Appreciate it. I'm trying, I want to give this individual, he's still trying to connect. Emily, is there anything? Is this our end, or is this on there?
It's on there. I have a couple of phone numbers that have connected, but he's not popping up as one, so.
Have we talked about this before? I know that, isn't this...
Yeah, we, we talked about this a lot.
Okay, yeah.
I, yeah, we got an individual trying to connect, but not able to do so. But I assume, Jason, they're speaking in favor of the ordinance. Do you know?
I think so. On it, I can try to get him on a phone call if you want to, but I previously have had discussions. He was one of the gentlemen, there was three or four that were in favor of this, so I'm assuming that he's calling in in favor of it.
Okay.
I sent him the proposed side of it. He might have had comments in regards to certain aspects of it, but I think overall, he is in favor.
Okay. I agree. Thank you.
Do you want me to try to call him, Mark, or to get him on, or are you good with that?
Well, if you could just call him, Jason, real quick, and see if, if, if he's in support of the mode, if he's in support of it, I just don't want to leave his comments out. He's trying to connect, but he just can't get on.
Yeah, yep. So actually, he just sent me a text. He must have heard our conversation. He said he can't connect, but he is in favor.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Are there any other public comments to this? Hearing none. I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
McCombs?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
Very good. Next item is 2020-68, approval of first reading. And Ed, you said we could just prove it on this motion?
Yes, pursuant to three thirty-one, three oh-two, six A, and then six B, after, since we published in advance at the office of the auditor, it can vote on one meeting prior to the meeting. You could now, at this point, you could move to suspend by recorded vote subsequent readings and vote the ordinance after one reading. So as long as you folks at this point vote to suspend by recorded vote the additional readings.
Very good. Thank you. Is there any discussion from the board? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion then to do as instructed by our county attorney.
So moved.
It will suspend by recorded vote. Since we're recording our vote. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Very good. So that takes item four off the table, then. Right?
Mm-hmm.
All right. So items three and four are done. Item number five, resolution 2020-79, which is the amended planning zoning agreement, our 2080.
Correct. So
Missy.
Ed?
I would like to know.
Could we, could we go back one second? You suspended having to do the second and third reading, but you still do need to vote on the ordinance as a whole. You, at this point, simply voted to suspend subsequent, you need to vote on the ordinance.
Oh, okay. Well, thank you, Ed. Thank for the clarification. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance, 2020-68?
Make motion, we approve ordinance 2020-68.
Second.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye. Very good. We'll have to get familiar with that. That's a two-step process.
Which is with the way we handle the ordinance, the next two ordinance is working on.
So same thing, Missy?
Correct.
All right.
I mean, that's how we, I always publicly shed to on.
So Jake, when we, when we do these, we're going to have to put those two steps in, keep our liturgy right there. Okay, very good. Thank you. 2020-79, Missy.
Okay, so this is a resolution to amend the 2080 agreement between Marion County and the City of Pella, which was originally adopted in July of 2003. There's only been one amendment over the years, which was in August of 2011, when Pella adopted Marion County's enlarged lot sizes in the A1 zoning district. In 2019, Marion County and Pella started some discussions initiated by Marion County on some changes to the 2080. The biggest change to the 2080 is, instead of having the original tiered control of subarea A, B, and C, it now goes down to, is reduced in size, down to subarea A, one mile around the City of Pella. And the City of Pella has total control of both land division and zone. A couple other changes that were added to the resolution were that Pella will have still issue the driveway permits, although Marion County Engineer's Office will have site distance approval and drainage that, on those driveways. The other thing outlined is that Marion County will exercise the authority and enforcement regarding nuisances in that one-mile area. Problematic for the City of Pella to do that, since they, their law enforcement doesn't have jurisdiction in that one-mile. And the other, one of the other things that have, was left kind of open-ended in the last one, is the amendment, or the 2080 will be reviewed every five years concurrently with the City of Pella's comprehensive plan. So if there's any annexations or reason that that one-mile would bump out, then it would be addressed every five years instead of as needed. Also defined, as you can see, the pink areas on the map, the yellow is the one-mile. The pink areas are the parcels that are intersected by the one-mile. Those will be handled by the City of Pella unless they sign an agreement. Those will be handled by the city of Pella unless they sign an agreement to have Marion County take care of those parcels. So, yeah, we start with the, the resolution, the amendment to the twenty eighty, which then, in this case, does affect two Marion County-
The pink areas are separate agreements?
What's that?
The pink area would be separate agreements?
No, the pink area are parcels or subdivisions that are intersected by that one mile. Pella will handle those areas unless for some reason they feel it's better for Marion County, at which time they will rescind their control at their discretion.
So to be handled on an individual basis?
Correct. Those pink parcels will be handled on an individual basis of the review.
Okay.
Is Tyler on?
So we did originally have a group of environmental help, county engineers, myself and the county attorney.
What's your thoughts on this, Tyler?
Long time coming. I think it'll be better for both entities moving forward.
So you're supportive?
Yes.
Okay.
Jake? Ed, now you guys ran this by Ed too, correct?
This was actually reviewed by Hopkins and Hubner. Ed was, I mean, Ed was involved in it and then after Pella adopted it, Ed was tied up with some cases and it was actually run through Hopkins and Hubner.
Okay. All right. Ed, any comments at all from just your oversight of it?
I was in some of the early decision-making process, at which point we turned it over to Hopkins. I, I trust their judgment on this issue and I know that there's, Missy and Tyler did a ton of work on this. I was part of some of the drafting of letters to try to come to an agreement. And I think we did what we needed to do to address the majority of the concerns that Tyler had, and I think this will make it more, it'll make it better for our citizens regardless of where they live, where the line's drawn, have some consistency in how we approach doing things.
Very good. Board, any questions, discussion?
No, I know this has been a subject for quite a while. I'm glad they finally got it worked out. Thank you, Missy, Tyler and everybody involved.
Yes, Missy, Tyler, the whole group that was involved, please, thank you very much for getting this squared away and updated. We desperately needed that.
Yep. Excellent work there.
Is there a motion to approve the amended city-county planning zoning agreement, resolution twenty twenty seventy-nine?
Make motion we approve resolution twenty twenty seventy-nine.
Second. McCombs?
Aye.
Raimi?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
All right, very good. We'll declare this public hearing open for amendment to propose Marion County ordinance twenty twenty sixty-nine, or an amendment to the official zoning map. We're reflective of this resolution, correct, Missy?
Correct. So what that does do is affect Marion County zoning map to go again to the yellows, the one mile, the pink are the intersected. We've got a couple areas, one would be the storage unit south, the other's Hunter's Ridge that will go revert, revert back to Marion County's, zoning Marion County before Pella took over some of those areas. Everything else within that one to two mile is zoned agricultural, so.
Very good. Is there any public comment? All right, seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Make motion we close the public hearing.
Second. Raimi?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Twenty twenty sixty-nine. Approval of said amendment. Two-step process. We have to, we can, since we are doing a recorded vote, vote to approve and waive the second and third reading of the zoning amendment. Is there any discussion?
I don't have any.
Is it a two-step, the two-step, we approve the-
We approve the fact that we are going to waive the second and third reading because we're doing a recorded vote, and then the next step is we approve the-
Approve the actual- The actual ordinance.
And it was also published in the legal notice that was in the paper that there would be a request to waive the second and third reading.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm just trying to follow the language after I heard it say. I'm probably not quoting Ed exactly correctly here, but I'm doing, I'm doing my best without a script here, Ed.
So the first motion is to waive the second and third reading?
To suspend, yeah.
Yes, yeah.
That's the first motion.
Yeah.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Jake?
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Raimi?
Aye. Twenty twenty sixty-nine. Motion to approve.
Make motion to approve.
Second. McCombs?
Aye.
Raimi?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
Very good. Declare the public hearing open. Twenty twenty seventy, we're amending zoning ordinance chapter fifty-five, referencing said twenty eighty.
So this, the Marion County zoning ordinance, chapter fifty-five, I know fifty-five point two, three, sections one and two, reference the Pella twenty eighty and the subarea in which we reduce that subarea to one mile.
Okay. Any public comments?
I did have two phone calls from the public through this process, which were in favor of the original, the zoning commission voted in favor of, of these changes on November seventeenth, twenty twenty. And I've had, he said I've had heavily, two or three phone calls from citizens that are affected, which are in the favor, in favor of, and some of them confident of the bid to get the changes in place. It'll definitely be an ease for both Marion County, the city of Pella, and definitely the cities, citizens in the affected area, for clarity.
Good. Excellent. Thank you, Missy.
Is this twenty twenty seventy-nine or twenty twenty seventy? Which one are we?
Twenty twenty seventy. The resolution was twenty twenty seventy-nine. The ordinance is twenty twenty seventy.
Okay, okay.
All right. Seeing no public comments, I'll declare this public hearing, or a motion to close public hearing. I was going to declare.
Make motion to close the public hearing.
Not a monarchy yet.
Second. Raimi?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Twenty twenty seventy, which is to approve the first reading and suspend readings two and three of said ordinance.
So moved. We're going to discuss.
Unless you have discussion.
Yeah, unless we have discussion.
Anything you haven't discussed now that you want to discuss, that you haven't discussed previously?
No. I didn't talk this to death.
Is there a motion?
I made motion.
He should have a motion on the table. Is there support?
Second. Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Raimi?
Aye. And then twenty twenty seventy, approval of said ordinance, amending all the things that we've said we'd amend.
Make motion we approve ordinance twenty twenty dash seventy.
Second. McCombs?
Aye.
Raimi?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
Very good. Thank you. Want to see how Jake actually records this. That board slowly degenerated into a Monty Python-like spirit.
Exactly.
While reading said twenty eighty. Guys, thank you for going through this process. I appreciate it very much. Appointment to the conservation board. Quote thirty-one twenty-five, we had a nomination. Is Steve on? Steve?
Yep, I'm here, Mark.
Yeah, so we got the letter from, this came from Bill, right?
Yep, yep.
Okay. He's willing to serve till twenty twenty-five? Or no, for this term that ends twenty twenty-five?
Yes, correct.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Very good. Discussion from the board?
I have no problems with this.
Nor do I.
Okay. And Steve, just send our compliments to your board. Thank you for all that they do to help you and the team. We've got, we've got great, a great conservation group, some of the top facilities in the state, so you guys do an excellent job, so we appreciate their service to our residents.
Appreciate that, Mark. And we appreciate the board of supervisors' consideration for, you know, reappointment to Chad, so appreciate everything you do for us as well.
Thank you. Is there a motion for this appointment?
Motion that we approve Chad, Chad Bulge to the Marion County Conservation Board.
Second.
Jake?
Raimi?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Resolution twenty twenty eighty is Marion County official twenty twenty-one employee schedule. So Lisa, what do we got?
Same, same holidays as we've, we've traditionally done in the past, so. After discussion.
Okay. We did Christmas Eve this year and an amendment to holidays.
Yes.
As a thank you to employees, so. Any discussion from the board on this proposed holiday list?
I don't have anything.
Elected officials, any discussion from you as well on this list?
Mark, I would just continue to indicate, you know, from the county attorney's office, having us track with state holidays would be helpful. We end up having to, you know, my office takes off Martin Luther King Day because it's a state holiday with courts not in service, but I believe it's President's Day, we do in fact have to be here to work, so.
Ed, would it, would it make, would it make sense to, I, I realize why we, maybe why this was, this has been this way for a long time. I think since you and I have been working together. Would it make some sense to change that President's Day to Martin Luther King Day?
You know, Mark, that's up to you folks. All I can tell you is some consistency between the state would be helpful for us. I mean, ideally, I think I speak on behalf of all of my employees here, I would say perhaps just add Martin Luther King Day to the list.
I think you got general support here after that. There you go. Good job. All right.
A good compromise. The weather's better on President's Day.
It's a longer span.
Well, you know what? I, I would, I guess I would say this, I would say this. Looking at the list that we were willing to add Christmas Eve, and this year, Christmas Day falls on the twenty, falls on a Friday, so it's a little different.
Yeah.
So we get it off anyway, it's Christmas.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So adding Martin Luther King Day, keeping President's Day, I, I, I'm fine with that. I don't care. I-
What day does that, what does that fall on, Ed?
Didn't tell you.
I think it's the eighteenth, but I'd have to double check, guys.
And Michaela, does the banks, are they generally closed on both days, or is there one day that they honor more than others? Do we know?
They are typically closed on both days.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with just adding MLK Day to the list.
As is the post office, so we don't get a lot of mail, plus we can't go to the bank.
Don't look for Christmas Eve next year.
They're closed on both days?
Yeah. Closing both days would be awesome. I mean, it's usually just a catch-up day for us because we're not getting anything from the post office and we can't go to the bank either day. So, yeah, we would love to have both days.
I'm fine, I'm fine with that if there's no-
How does that, and then they still get their floating day?
I want to say-
Usually on Monday.
Yeah, I'm not saying, I'm not saying, I'm not saying change anything about what's on there, just add for this year, we add MLK Day to the list.
Won't be Christmas Eve next year.
Yeah, that's our, that's our, that's our, that's our add now. We'll just do it now instead of, unless, of course, we get another crisis situation like, you know, we had this year, which, which, you know, part of the reason for adding Christmas Eve was not just because it wasn't on the list, it's because people worked their blanks off doing things that were totally different than the normal expectation.
What month does that fall in?
January eighteenth.
Oh, boy, that'd be like devil time for Tyler's people.
Maybe we're not going to get snow this year. Maybe we're not going to-
Global warming, it's existential crisis, I heard from our new leader.
Okay, well, oh, can't put my on. While there's discussion here on this, obviously, I know it's going to come up, our union contract's not probably going to be negotiated or done by then, so even though, I guess I'm going to fight for my employees here a little bit, I mean, would they be eligible for that at the sheriff's office?
Eligible for the extra day, Jason?
Yeah, because on, on the contracts, they, they've already negotiated certain contracts and we're now, I mean, like Christmas, I mean, coming up, that's not in the union contract, but I, I feel it's fair for them to get it.
Well, and we said that, and we said that, and we said that in our board-
They're still county employees.
Yeah, yep.
We, we said in our board meeting when we approved Christmas Eve that it's for everybody.
Okay, so we got, so that one will take care of Christmas Eve, but now on this one, since we won't have negotiations done, is it the same assumption there?
It would be the same.
Same assumption, I think.
We're not making any distinctions, just like with life insurance when we added life insurance. We added that for everybody before we included it in the contract.
I, I consider them county employees, union or not union.
I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Any, board, any objections?
I have no objection.
I have no objections.
Okay. So, so I would entertain a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty, or first, is there a motion to amend this by adding MLK Day as an official county holiday?
So moved.
I'll second it.
I think it better smooth, I hope it smoothes the griping out.
Roll call, Jake. There's a motion in support.
Raimi?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Is there a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty dash eighty as amended?
So moved.
Second. McCombs?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
Raimi?
Aye. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Appreciate it.
I, I will say-
January eighteenth?
Lisa, will you send out an email to all the elected so then they can pass it on to the employees?
I'll send it to all department heads.
Okay.
And get a new copy to Jake.
Sorry, yeah, all department heads, sorry.
Yep, I will get that out.
Okay. Item fourteen on this extremely lengthy agenda. Jake, you're supposed to tell me when I go too long. Cut it off at the well.
How about Elvis's birthday?
It's coming up, right?
Before this meeting deteriorates.
Moving on.
We want to approve the dissemination agent agreement with DA Davidson.
This one's actually mine.
Jake, tell us what, tell us what we got here.
Well, this is my request. Whenever the county sells bonds, we've been having to do an annual disclosure filing for the period for some time. Public financial management has been helping us with that. Since the last time we sold bonds, many years ago, to ones who just sold in December for Prairie Ridge, there's been a lot of regulation changes on what needs to be filed on an annual there's been a lot of regulation changes on what needs to be filed on an annual disclosure. DA Davidson, who has assisted us through this whole process, has every capability and, and they're willing to become our dissemination agent and help us and assist us in all the required disclosure filings for our new bond issue and also our old bond issue. So I would, I would recommend that we assign this. My office probably named us the filing agent or disclosure and all those documents, but they would then become our dissemination agent, like, taking care of us with all the timelines, all the tables, all the information that's required. So I, I'm requesting and recommending this. I believe it's a thousand dollars a year.
Yep.
To do so, but I think it protects us greatly.
I, I think it's a great idea, Jake, and it, it dots a lot of eyes in this process for us, both from an audit standpoint, financially and legally, so I think that's a great idea. I have no issues with this at all. Board, any questions or discussion?
No, I think it's gonna be helpful for you on the board, yeah.
It would be very helpful to us.
Okay.
Very good, thank you. If there is none, I would entertain a motion on this agreement.
So moved.
I'll second.
To approve?
To approve, yeah.
Motion in support to approve the dissemination agent agreement with DA Davidson, Jake?
McCollum?
Aye.
Raimi?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
Very good, thank you. Next. Probably the most controversial item on the agenda. Now, we brought this up when, Emily, about? Three months ago, four months ago, whatever?
Yep. So.
We, well, let me, let me start off with some comments.
Okay.
We'll make it short and sweet. We tried to take into account, remember, we're trying to find a standardized logo for county, particularly Board of Supervisor, letterhead. Other elected officials may certainly use this, but you are not obligated to use this. There's not a requirement that you use this. You can use up your stock of letters that you have with your other letterhead on there. I would recommend you do that. And I, we're trying to get away from the confusion that we're not Marion, Iowa, or another county in Illinois or Indiana. Alright? So with that, we came up with some different ideas or some revisions. Definitely take it away.
So with that in mind, a main concern was that we were gonna be confused with Marion, Iowa. We wanted to leave the basic concept the way it was. We wanted to leave it crisp, clean, with no confusion as to what the logo represents. So we went ahead and made the county on it bigger. Obviously, like I said, we, we left the concept the same as it is. We changed the font, we changed the size, we made it bold, but it's still, it's still Marion County, it's still, you can, you understand that it's an Iowa flag, there's no confusion as to what it's supposed to represent. With that being said, obviously, on the revised part with the Iowa flag, I think a change that we had talked about we would do is make the county centered, the county Iowa and then the number sixty-three centered with the flag and the Marion part of it. But other than that, I wanted to, we wanted to kind of leave it the way it was and just make some things a little bit bigger and bolder, so that way we understood that, I mean, people are gonna read it however they want to read it, but we know that it's Marion County, Iowa, so.
So what are we asking?
Discussion, and if you like it.
I like the revised version with the flag.
Yep.
I like the top.
Because I, I think that would be less confusing than the, the other one.
So the idea was the revised version on the top with the flag. We like the revised version. The difference between the two, we would have both of them, but the one with the flag is going to be on letterhead, on envelopes, on something that the detail isn't going to get lost in it. The detail's still gonna be there. It's gonna be professional, whereas the bottom part of just the blocked lettering, the revised version, we like that also because it's still crisp, clean, and it's noticeable that it's supposed to be Marion County, is going to be on hats, on shirts, so that way it, when it's blown up, whatever the case may be, there's nothing getting lost in that. And we have, we have it in the format that even with the flag in that part of the logo, we can blow it up however big we want it to be, and it's not going to be distorted in any way. So that really isn't an issue anyways, but we wanted to have both versions. So that way we can put it on a hat and it's not cluttered.
So it's for the board's perspective and for anybody, you know, who has an interest in this piece of it, there, there were really two events that caused me to go to Emily and say, I would like a new logo, or a logo for Marion County. Number one, we are more involved than ever in economic development, more than we've ever been as a county. Working with Powell, working with Knoxville, working with other cities. I had calls from Pleasantville. I've met with Joe Merstik. I'm, I'm going to have other meetings with other towns in Marion County about jointly working on economic development. We don't have anything to put the county forward in our, when we write letters, when we respond on email, and something from a marketing perspective that jumps out to a business or prospective employer that they remember who we are, and logos do that. I've worked in the corporate sector long enough to know that matters. So clean, crisp, sharp matters. Second, COVID. We had nothing in all of the official communications that we had that really represented Marion County. We borrowed the emergency management materials, we did other things. I think we need to have something when that next event comes to say, this is Marion County. Because COVID was a great example of a joint, our countywide response that encompassed not just county government, but also municipalities and other entities. And our county stepped up in ways that I, I'm extraordinarily proud of. And this is who we are. So that's the two reasons, the genesis for this thought. And I think Emily took that and did a great job working with whoever it was we worked with, I don't remember who it was, to come up with some ideas.
Mark?
Yeah?
Mark, this is Ed. I'm just wondering, do we have any examples yet of the total, what I'll call portfolio of, of the, the logo? What I mean by that is, what does this look like in black and white? And what does it look like when it has to be transported or placed on a website from proxy? You know, the size and, and those type of things. You know, it, it is what it is from the elected officials' perspective, but I, I kind of would like to know what it looks like. So I'm not, if we choose to make this change, I'm not paying incredible amounts of money for the amount of printing that the three, you know, the, the, using this amount of ink on every envelope and every letter is gonna look like. And I'm just concerned. Like the white, it's, it's not gonna be crisp, it's gonna look pretty bland.
That's actually, that's an excellent point, Ed, and I think putting some samples together is a great next step. I like, I, I guess, I would like to get a sense of, and just having, again, having done this a lot, black and white for the flag logo is gonna be tough. The bottom two logos are easier to, that's where black and white's gonna be more defined and crisp.
The bottom two logos are not for letterheads.
It can be.
It can be.
It can be, okay.
The point of having a couple, and, and we can certainly pick two, is to have some flexibility.
Okay.
So when you're doing clothing, or if you, if you make a hat, you want something simple. You don't want the Iowa, you can't, that stuff's hard to do, and the busier the logo is, the, the worse it is. So the bottom one makes a lot of sense for that type of thing, so what all corporations do. They want it crisp, clear, and something you can remember.
We need to think about also, we're working on the website, I was gonna talk about that in my updates, but being able to make that, whether it's smaller, you know, and so.
It can be adjusted at any point in time. It can be enlarged, it can be made smaller, it can be put on fabric.
So to Ed's point, which I think is a great point, how about, and we don't have to decide on anything yet, if, if we want to put together some samples, Emily.
Yep.
That we can show in the, in the next meeting.
Yes.
I think that's a great idea. I like it. So let's do that.
Andrew?
This is Andrew. Yeah, I, I did have one comment, too. It's, this, these logos are both kind of a wide, I guess, format. And a lot of the website stuff and different functions where we might need a logo from IT tends to, tends to lean more towards like a more square. Would you guys be able to make a sample?
This is more of a banner style?
That could follow that format.
But more of a banners, this is more of a banner style, Andrew, as opposed to something more condensed?
It's more of a, and, and there's certain functions and, and things, websites and buttons and, and icons and things that would require more of a square type of logo.
Good point. Emily, let's maybe, let's maybe think about that, too. Okay? Good point. Appreciate it, very good. Any, any other comments, feedback, suggestions? Tyler, does this eliminate the confusion with other cities? At least to the point we can. We can't change our county name.
I don't know.
Good answer.
What's the, um, earlier you said specifically the Board of Supervisors. What, what's the expectation here on implementation or transition plan here? And I was gonna ask the same thing about Ed's point. Ninety-nine percent of what we do is in black and white.
I thought you, I thought you said earlier it was optional.
I did.
What, say that again?
Yeah, we're, the, the logo for us, and, and again, we got these different elected offices. However, Tyler, you do work for the Board of Supervisors. So if we wanted to say, this is our Marion County logo for our road department, this is what it would be. I think we could actually have that discussion and say what works. But we need something from a marketing standpoint, because we don't have one. Apart from what all you have, we don't have one. And, and, and in point of fact, I don't really have to bring this to anybody. I can just say, this is our logo, and this is what we adopt, and that's it. I'm just looking for input to try to make this as team-centric as possible. And what the expectation would be is that if it works and makes sense, and is aesthetically pleasing and can fit on some of these different applications, that people would start to use it. That's it. It's not as, that's as complicated as it gets. So that's the expectation, and I'm, I'm open to a lot of input. I think it's a good, a good exercise for us to think about. Remember, the two things I brought up, we are trying to put our county forward and attract new businesses. I can't use your logos for that, because they don't, they don't work. I need a Marion County logo to try to attract businesses to this county. So.
Yeah, it wasn't, the, 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 the initial concept was not to replace everybody's logo.
Wasn't that at all. And some of it, we can, from a legal standpoint, like with Jake and some of the things he has to do, we can. So I get all that, but I'm certainly not gonna use what he's putting on ballots as our communication and we go try to recruit businesses. I'm not gonna do that. That'd be, that'd be silly, so.
The one thing you might wanna do on the kerning on the Iowa is to add some space on that kerning so that as that's used smaller, it doesn't disappear.
Okay.
Good comment, Carla, thank you. Thank you.
The other comment I was gonna say is that the letterhead that, that the gal will create will give you options at the bottom to add your, your logos if you wanna use them. I know Kim was involved in that conversation. She has like WIC and, and I smile that she has to put on her specific letters. Well, there will be room at the bottom of the letterhead that you can put in still your logos if you need those in there.
Sure, okay.
Yeah, use it, use it how you see fit, period.
So let's come up with some mockups on how it would look. Fit on a webpage, fit on some other publications, black and white, how's it look? And we might see that and go, yeah, you know, we need to make a revision.
Because ultimately, you know, depending upon where we go with the website, it is something that you're gonna, when you bring it up, it's that, what he's talking about, that square, that's what you're gonna see. I mean, you know, typically, I mean, you know, you would want some, especially for economic development, you know, so.
Good. Alright, thank you for your input. We, we sure appreciate it. With that, I would entertain a motion, motion to close discussion on this item.
Make motion, uh, yeah, make motion that we close discussion?
Second. I thought you were kidding.
No, I wasn't. Jake?
Raimi? Johnner, I'm sorry.
Aye.
McCollum?
Aye.
Updates, Mr. McCollum?
No, I have nothing.
This is John. I sort of like the Elvis thing.
Yeah, when you bring my head Elvis's birthday off.
This is John.
A team of us are working on website, looking at some different opportunities. So hopefully in the near future, we'll be able to present something to the board, so going from there. But our website needs some overhaul, so.
Excellent, thank you for doing that. Appreciate that. And I gave you mine with the VA and everything that's going on with that, that is occupying a considerable amount of my time. Prairie Ridge seems to be moving ahead very well. Keisha, I know you're sitting on that board as defined by the twenty eighty. So are there, is there anything going on from that standpoint?
Um, I did approve the fourteen specs homes, so those should hopefully be starting here in the near future.
Good, good.
And so yes, they are moving.
Excellent, excellent. And, and as, as it pertains to the VA, just from a board standpoint, we are getting, I, I, the level of cooperation between city, school district, local businesses, and the county has never been higher. I, I couldn't be more pleased with what I've seen from the local community of Knoxville. When I see like KDC and their representatives have been willing to do, Cassie, Larissa, the school board, and then the folks at, at city government, Brian, Aaron, Heather, Dylan, the rest of the city council. The cooperation and communication is at its highest point ever. And it's been good, but it's getting better all the time, so they, I think everybody realizes the magnitude of this project. And for all of our county taxpayers, this is significant. And there will be others that, that we will have opportunities to do in other communities. And I look forward to seeing how viable those will be for us to consider.
That's great news, because even if you have to agree to disagree, at least you've got the communication.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. So it's, it's an excellent position to be in, and we look forward to beginning work. I, that's, we said we would do it. This board has been consistent on that, and we're gonna start this project. And I think it's gonna be a wonderful thing for Knoxville and Marion County. There you go, there's mine.
Again, I'd like to, you know, especially thank Chris because he's taken on quite loads. Even now, especially with the VA coming back up into the forefront with our, especially with our courthouse renovation, everything. I, I appreciate all your hard work, Chris.
And I appreciate, you know, his facilities overall, his, all of his staff, and everybody, even, you know, with the courthouse and going through, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, oh, and I did have, I did go to the compensation board meeting, and it was a great discussion. Thanks to all those individuals who are serving on that board. And I know one of the things that I told them when they talked about salary recommendations, I said, from, from a board perspective, they need to make their own decisions. They need to think about this from an economic perspective of the county. That's really why that board exists. What's going on in the county from the private sector, how does that translate through to, to salary recommendations? But the one thing I said is, our officials, our elect, and this is specifically to elected officials, but can also be applied to the non-electeds as well. They did something in twenty twenty that I think is exceptional. When you consider being asked to move out, set up temporary shop, figure out your operations, move back, do the same thing all over again, reconfigure an entire courthouse, conduct an election, go through the worst healthcare crisis we've had, at least for many of us in our history. That's exceptional. As it's, when you think about job performance, that takes, that takes a unique group of people. So we may all have our differences, but at the end of the day, you pulled off something that many, many private sector organizations would struggle doing, and I know, because I've been a part of them for thirty years. So my hat's off to all of you. And I know, because I've been a part of them for thirty years, so my hat's off to all of you for that. Uh job well done. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Mark? Mark?
Yes?
This is Karen. Can I say just a, a couple words before you go?
Sure, don't ruin my punchline, Karen.
Um, the only thing that I wanted to point out was, um, thank you for passing the Marion County ordinance twenty twenty sixty-eight about the ATBs. Um, we did notice during the meeting that it does say the effective date is February first, twenty twenty-one. So we want, you know, our citizens to know that, that it doesn't start, it doesn't start immediately, it starts February first, twenty twenty-one.
Very good. Thank you, Karen, for that.
Enforcement can take care of that.
Appreciate, appreciate that. Good. Anything else for the good of the order? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Jake?
McCollum?
Aye.
Remy?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.